...for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you've got the agenda before you. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications that you'd like to make? I have one small one. If you look at number four, discuss Jifa loans and recommended payoff, I'd like to include plus other financial matters that I want to, during this work session, bring to your attention. Entertain a motion, do we approve adding that segment to the item number four?
Make a motion.
Mr. Bloodworth made a motion, do we put an addition at the end of item number four, seconded by Mr. Bloodworth. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other modifications? Entertain a motion, do we approve the agenda? Mr. Johnson made a motion, do we approve the agenda as amended? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Griffin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda, our work is set up for us, the agenda is set. Mr. Benjamin, James Benjamin, he's county commissioner, has had a discrepancy or question about his water bill, and he was to be here with someone else that got mixed up. He does have a commissioner meeting, so I can understand him not being here. But I've had Lori to go back and do the history on this. Lori wants you to come up here and give reports to and go into the system, and we'll record it all and make sure that we get some of your information.
As I understand, Mr. Stone, he gave you a bill for $5,500 dating all the way back to 2008?
Well, no, he estimated, he said, my estimation is $5,500.
Dating back to 2008?
About to do eight, yes.
If you'll look at the paperwork I sent, it's after each one of you look at, on page one.
That's this section, same or are you folks, if you?
It's a little unclear, so I went and printed on the third page, say, when Mr. Benjamin put it a deposit at that particular location on 2/26 of 2004, ten, not 2008. Okay, on page two, you'll notice the second yellow mark says final disconnect date of 8/16/18, and on the left-hand side, you'll see highlighted in gray sewer disconnect. The Water and Sewer Department was called out to the ditch on the bypass rig, which is Larry Contos Boulevard, for some water leaking in the ditch. They discovered it was sewer. Now, we were all under the impression that the prior Water and Sewer Administrator had tied in that particular plaza onto the city sewer line, so we started charging them for sewer. And but always to us, none of them were on the city sewer, his sewer was running into the ditch. So, that is...
Well, it wasn't exactly running the ditch, there was a safety tank there, but there was no drain field and all, and it just so happened, this was long before Mr. Benjamin came in out there now. She'll get that, get you that point out. But there was such a minor amount of usage going into that safety tank, that the tank itself and the hose in it would take care of it, and then go ahead on.
So, with him approaching us all the way back to 2008, I've got you some, I've got some sheets here where newer readings are at. You'll see in January where I've got the arrows that, that would figure the account that Mr. Benjamin would have been inserted into. He was not in there. February the 19th, he was not in there, because he put his deposit up February the 26th.
Where is that now, what page is that on?
That's when we...
Oh, yeah, wait.
Okay, and then on 3/31, you'll see I have a circle where Mr. Benjamin started getting the bill, and started getting rid of it. Again, in, well, in April, just letting you all know that he is being billed now, you know, after he put his deposit up in 2014. He never uses under or over the minimum amount, which is 23 outside, $23 a month outside sewer. And that's on the second to last sheet showing the minimum amount is $23. Now, on the final sheet, I have went back each year and gave a dollar figure on exactly how much he was charged per year for his sewer usage. That amount totals to $1,242.
So, instead of the $5,500 that he estimated, you say he's actually paid the city $1,242 for sewer services that he didn't have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, he needs to come in and you go with this with him, and then, um, counsel, I entertain a motion, that if you, this is according to Ms. Williams' records, exactly what we've done. I entertain a motion that we reimburse him for $1,242 if he's agreeable to that.
I make a motion, we refund $1,242 from sewer to Benjamin Concrete.
Is there a second to Mr. Griffin's motion? Seconded by Mr. Ramey. Any further discussion? Huh? Go ahead. Well, here's, here's the only thing that I'll say. I'm sure, and there's gonna be, James is a good fellow, I think a lot of him, but I'm sure he's not gonna be satisfied with this at all. But if it's something else other than this, we'll get back with the council and renegotiate. But if he settles with this, we'll go ahead and have, um, write him a check for this one out. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you can proceed after that amount, if you don't like it, go after something else.
I mean, that's what we charged him. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I be dismissed?
You surely may.
Thank you.
Okay. Hello, gentlemen. We were not notified until about, I guess our notification, May, pardon?
Two weeks ago.
Well, as I said, about less than a month ago, and Miss Bernie said that we were notified, she says, two weeks ago, that our auditor that we've had for years has gotten out of the municipal auditing business. And Lori, is that your phone out there?
That's mine.
Well, that's yours, okay. All right, um, they've gotten out of, they still, their specialty is housing authorities in more than one state, as I understand. But we're, we're here at the point now where we need an auditor. I'm talking about for 217, our year that we closed out, June the 30th of 217. We need an auditor in here right away. The audit should be completed, although we've asked for extensions before, but the audit really should be completed by the end of this year. And we don't even have an auditor. And, um, and we've done, Tammy's done a little calling, and I've done a little calling, to give you the facts now. Kendall Davis and Ms. Haley, his assistant, have been charging us around $12,000 a year for the audit. Twelve, I think, one year we may have paid them 15, somewhere in that range. But just to give you, to jar you as if we don't have enough financial woes, and this is not a firm figure, but they're estimating our audit's gonna cost us somewhere around 25, 30,000 dollars. That's twice what we've been paying. And I'm hoping that that's not true, but it looks like it might be. And plus, we got to have, I don't know where we're gonna get one at. If y'all got any ideas that you can share with us. The, um, I certainly want somebody that has experience and background in municipal city audits, because the way of keeping books and doing things with a municipality is totally different from county government, and it's totally different from many busy, private business. A municipal, city government is an entity of its own, and the only thing that I would say to you, I have absolutely no preference, but I certainly want whoever we employ to do the audit to have ample background in auditing municipalities. And then we need to orchestrate as best we can to see if we can stay somewhere close to what we've been paying, but it doesn't appear that we are. And I can't emphasize now how critical this is. We can, um, we're gonna have to ask for an extension, let's narrow it down like that. But we're gonna be in the best I ever know if we don't get this in fine order.
So neither one of them is available now?
Neither one of them.
They no longer are licensed, they don't have the time, and they don't have the people to do it, so they do not have the license for it.
Just we start scouting out who did it on our other cities around us.
Well, we already doing that, Tammy's working on it, and I am too. But then again, the people that we've contacted so far, their wags loaded, and they can't commit to coming in particularly, but we'd be in a new account, coming in this late. We're in the middle of a heist, but you put it plain now, we're, we're up against it.
William Lee, I'll do it.
If you got the, necessarily, just if you don't mind, if you've got no time, let's get in here, you call him, or get me a number, and let's see what we can do to start trying to get somebody on board, because this is critical now.
And to emphasize, as city clerk, because Tammy and I have talked about this, last year there was an extension filed, I don't know that we will fall under that this time.
Well, we're gonna ask to, they're gonna ask to, anybody chose this. Unless they wanna lock us up, I don't think they wanna do that. There be no way we can get somebody on board to get it done within the time interval that we about to do, so we, we're gonna have to bang somebody up there. Got any comments about that?
Is this just something that they just decided all of a sudden I'm doing, then the, oh, by the way, I mean, that's just, I mean, I should say it was two weeks ago they contacted us, but I mean...
I had been talking to Kendall probably since July, maybe, trying to tell him we wanted to keep him on at least till the end of the year, and then they waited till two to three weeks ago to call me and said, they can't do it.
About two or three weeks ago, they informed us with the Senate and the community leader, they were getting some papers ready to bug with the Secretary of State, that they just keep doing it.
Yours? Well, I think one thing too now, you know, I don't know whether, I don't let this undone, but we stepped on Kendall's toes a little bit about what we thought was a blink of a bill, and he informed us that he had closed his business, and Hazel Urschin didn't owe the bill, and there may be a little anger in this, I really don't know, I hope that's not the case. It's sure has been dubbed on, so I heard. Any further comments relative to that? Well, I wish that all of you would take advantage of it, with all that we've got going on. It is gonna take all of us, getting it, putting our shoulders to the wheel and working on this now. Don't, don't think that you're not involved, and get involved with it. Have they got everything they needed, the ledger now to take care of this? Anything else on, anybody want to say relative to the auditor? All right, let's move on. Number three is the, we had a little problem with our advertiser, from that, didn't we, on hand? And is it all straightened out now, and everything is fine? I don't think you need to do anything, but I guess we just want to let you know that they've been a little bit late, pardon?
You have a flag on it.
What?
That's the memory.
Okay, they want us to vote on this language access plan, it's gonna be a thing that we deal with on all of our work for now. It's, it's, we've been having to somewhat deal with it, and we've got to, as a council, adopt the fact that we are a bilingual, a multilingual society, and we're gonna have to acknowledge the fact that we're gonna play ball with them. I entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution that we accept the language access plan, and that y'all authorize me to sign the city, the adoption, the letter to Mr. Robertson with Director of Officer Community Development, and get this done before the end of the month.
I make a motion, we are brought you to sign the letter for the...
Language access plan?
Language access plan.
Thank you, is there a second to Mr. Griffin's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bloodworth, any further discussion?
Now, will we be required to come up with all languages?
Well, so far, our grant writers and people have got it transposed forward, so we haven't had to work with it.
Basically, what I learned when I had to deliver some paperwork to ALGA and ALMA, our county is the only county that falls up under the language access plan because of the Hispanics that live in our county. And if you think about it, most of our people that work at the local industries are Hispanic, so this is why we fell off under that. We are the only county that falls up under this right now.
With ALMA, no, no, not, not the only county, it's the only one that ALMA, ALMA's dealing with, has to do it. Okay, we've got that adopted, all right, did we vote on it? Motion made in second, we need to vote, all in favor of, who's, uh, Bloodworth's second, yes. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried, and I won't resign before the vote's done. All right? All right, and you've gotten the note from our county, Ms. Metz, on some recommendations on relief, first of all, getting rid of some notes that we've got ample reserves to pay off, and it'll also, in doing so, reduce our monthly installments, this is Water and Sewer we're talking about now, not general funds. And it'll also relieve, there's enough reserves in the two accounts to pay them off, and get rid of those $8,000 a month payment, and put $25,000 back in the Water and Sewer Fund. Entertain a motion, we do that?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Johnson, that we proceed with Ms. Metz's recommendations, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bloodworth, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. On the, the addition that I put on the, um, um, item number four, oh, I have, we're struggling with, um, um, general fund, financial problems. And we've borrowed a good bit of money to meet obligations, it's gonna have to be paid back before his year's out, and I think I can, I can see the possibility of it working. But right now, we have a cutout of our, the ad loan taxes coming in good, we got our 300-something thousand insurance check, and we are solid at this time. But we've still got some unpaid bills on our airport project and on our roundabouts with Carl Hofstadter, that I have figured out a way, with you folks' approval, that we can come close to taking care of this, and if that insurance overpayment comes in, I'm gonna ask you, and of course, maybe it'll come in before Thursday, and I know we're handling a lot of things as if this is a regular meeting, but all of this so far is something that, that needs to be handled. We've got 40-something thousand left in our line of credit. We've got two SPOLOSH funds. One is a street SPOLOSH, it's got about 26,000 in it, and one is a public works, it's got about 20,000 in it.
General Fund Capital Reserve, not?
Oh, Capital Reserve, yeah, okay. And, yeah, thank you, I'm a little memory here. This little bit has made some good notes here. The, the thing that I'm gonna ask you to do, we owe Croy $67,994 on the balance that we owe them on the airport project. We've paid Trinity off, and we owe Georgia Asphalt 40-something thousand. But with 20,000 in the general fund reserves, I'm throwing a general fund now, the city street SPOLOSH and the line of credit, we can come up with enough money to pay off Croy $67,000. We owe Hofstadter $32,000, and I want to, I talked to him this afternoon late. I want to send Hofstadter $25,000 of what we owe, leave us over him about $7,000, and we'll deal with Georgia Asphalt another day. But I would like to, even though this is a work session, I'd like for y'all to approve us taking these SPOLOSH funds and line of credit and paying off Croy and sending Hofstadter a check for $25,000.
And how much is the total for both funds?
Wait a minute, where we get the funds? The general fund reserve is $20,099. The street SPOLOSH fund's about 26,000, and we, huh?
About $1,000.
Right, $95,048, and the 67, 25, come with $92,000, and then we'll, we'll deal with Georgia Asphalt another day.
And then we still got, we got one of the checks coming back in, and it's for about 80-something thousand of insurance.
Yeah, we talked about that Thursday night, I hope, we talk about it Thursday night.
Then we should, okay. That'll help us get through.
That'll help me face those people a little better, if you don't mind.
I make a motion on that.
Mr. Bloodworth made a motion that we take the three funds that I talked about, that went up to about $95,000, and pay Croy, pay them off. Trinity's already paid off, and pay Hofstadter $25,000. Is there a second to his motion?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Griffin. Now, anybody else, any, anyone wanna hash around about it?
Paying, no more than do the other seven.
Ain't got it.
I have a question, too.
Had got it, see, those two had $95, it's a little too, I just dealt real round figures. I talked to Carl, and the round figure was sending 25, and then we get the money, get, we'll send the, just a good round figure, you don't have to, it's easier to make the check out for 25.
We're paying, uh, one, uh, cop Hofstadter about 78%, where we're paying others at 100%. We're kinda short cutting somebody.
Well, we have, but we're doing, I assure you, doing all three accounts, and see, we just paid George Asphalt $11,000 something dollars on other job you had, and I...
100%?
Uh-huh.
That was one of those 100%?
We owe him $41,800 something dollars.
On the airport?
We owe the airport $41,877. We owe him, everybody, we paid just about, but them.
Just about. I still have contention with the fact that we've got, and it's been a long time, being paid, brought this up before, where we talked about paying our people money to do the job. If we've got the money, I think that Hofstadter ought to be paid full.
Well, we don't have the money, so show me where to get it, I want him paid too.
Well, what, I think I understand what Mr. Ramey's saying, that we're gonna have the other $83,000 coming in, we can pull that $7,000 from it, and go ahead and pay him in full, and be done with it.
That's, they've been telling me it's gonna be here for a month, and it may be here Thursday, it may not, I'm taking the money that we got in particular, particularly Croy. And because of the fact that some of the times y'all think I'm about to favor one contractor over another, I'm leaving him holding the bag of 40-something thousand, so I'm doing just the opposite of what you're accusing me of. I'm paying Hofstadter and Croy, and letting the person that you think I'm showing favoritism to, he's gonna have to wait on 40-something thousand dollars. I'm doing just the opposite of what you accuse me of.
Quite the opposite, well.
But when, 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 when that come in, we can authorize now that you go ahead and pay that stuff then, and take it in, and Hofstadter too, right?
Well, we can pay the other about $7,000 to him, and pay George Asphalt at that time.
Because as the money available, we all...
Well, I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of that. Let's handle it one thing at a time, unless we all get confused. Are we authorized to take the three funds and pay Croy and Hofstadter in the morning? Send them a check? The motion's made, and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or are we gonna do that? Now, you wanna make a motion that as soon as the $85,000 that we overpaid our insurance gets back in the bank, and we pay the $7,000 to Hofstadter and pay George Asphalt?
Yes.
Is that the motion you wanna make? Make it.
Our motion that we pay when the other revenue come in, that pay the other ones up, George Asphalt and Hofstadter remaining...
The main balance on that, is there a second to this motion? Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Mr. Ramey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, that'll tickle the heck out of me, I hope it gets here before Thursday. At first, those, they were gonna send us $167,000, and they later come back, said it wasn't gonna be that now. Then they said it was gonna be 80-something thousand, and still, according to my record, we overpaid our insurance $200,000 something thousand, and whether or not we get it back or not, I'm beginning to wonder. Okay. Um, another thing now, probably on finances, we've completed the negotiation and know what we've got to do with Dr. Johnson's building. Have you, Ms. Madam Attorney, where are we with the suggested financing that we want to do with that building, our roof, and all of these buildings over here, or you?
I was supposed to work on, meet with the DCA rep tomorrow in Harter, Georgia, but they were, both individuals were out of the office last week, so, and they were out Monday for the holiday, so I'm supposed to get with them tomorrow to start really hashing out that financing, so I can have a report back for Thursday.
I think with what Tammy, our candidate, again, has mentioned, that I think we're gonna, we initially decided we needed $350,000 to handle the whole deal, and with what Tammy's brought in about, we leave the Southside Church Building as an entity by itself, with using some funds that she's suggested that we use, and it will reduce our loan amount by about $75,000, is what I think we're gonna wind up. And we did have to increase the, we paid 25, 50, we paid $50,000 more for the property than we thought we would initially. I don't think we need to do anything, I just wanna make sure y'all know what's going on. I think I wanted to talk to some of you about it. Got any questions?
As far as, you know, for the occupation of the Dr. Johnson's building, everything, do we have that already?
Signed, sealed, and delivered.
And what kind of?
In fact, well, let me take that back, that's a little in error, sir. When I signed the papers, they were for $1,400 a month for three years, renewable, three. The contract is now $1,500 a month rent for five years, renewable for 10. So, that's, that's the change that's in there. And let me say this, and Charles and I have been working on this vigorously. They wanted to give me the key to the building, I've got the key to the building. Except for the times that they're in there working, Dr. Johnson decided that we, at Liberty, he trusts us enough to go in while they're still trying to operate this month and to the 18th of next month, but we can go in to begin work. And our new, our tenant that we've got the contract with, is won't be getting there the first of the year. It's gonna, if we get all of it done, it's gonna be a miracle. It's really got us under a lot of pressure. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, as the tenant willing to work with us, we're doing, while we're doing this, to protect and upgrade, and we're just gonna make sure we're not gonna take and leave ourselves on down, that's the biggest thing there, just wanna make sure.
Okay, anything else on that item? We went out to the state patrol post site, did a little soil analysis, had some people that had expertise to meet with us out there. We checked three different sites out there, and they said that the, of course, I sort of thought so, but I'm not a expert in that area. The base material of the piece of land that we bought to build the state patrol station on is solid, it's a dollar, you can mill on it. He says you don't need to do, do anything but remove the grass and...
Did Robert get back with you?
No.
He didn't?
No, I heard from him.
Okay, well, I talked to him on Friday, and he said he didn't see a problem with it, he was on a certified key, and he was supposed to give that to me today, and I forgot.
That's all right, he hasn't, but that, yes...
I got an update on that, they approved it a while ago.
For us, the voters out there?
Yes.
Well, I don't need it anymore. Well, I do too, I do too. But now, let me tell you what, well, listen now. When they got over out there today, and they found out we had the motor grader, we can take out there with our motor grader blade before we go in with our building, and take and pull that grass and top six inches off then one strip, go back and pull it. And we can take the motor grader probably and do a more efficient job of taking the, top the stuff that we want to... And we can take the motor grader probably and do a more efficient job of taking the, top the stuff that we want to, to remove. But now, once we get that done, we've got a lot of other work. So they, uh, did they say how long we could use it?
Keith suggested that y'all need it for just a few hours to kind of blade off where the building's gonna go.
Well, I thought that handled that, but I needed more than that. They didn't say how long.
No.
Okay, well, we, they'll work with us, I feel sure.
Yeah, it'll work.
Huh?
It'll work with us.
You want to talk to him, tell him?
Well, I didn't talk to him today, but I said, I know they will, I think if they approve that, I mean, I give Robert more definitely.
But with the little, I think the thing that, uh, I was real pleased this, this morning, uh, they'd already had and worked on that thing a lot that in, in preparation, there's a little trash out there, it's gotta be picked up. But we're gonna move, we won't move the, uh, motor grader tomorrow out there. But probably Thursday, we'll be, uh, taken and, and we'll start right in the middle of the building and, and, and just peel it off and, and they'll start putting the amount of field, we're gonna bring the, uh, about a foot and a half of big top soil. We need, we need to raise the floor elevation of the building. But anyway, we're, uh, we're getting started out there and, of course, I, I talked with the Renaissance Banks, got the, uh, construction on uh, with this and I told her if I fixed to start spending money and she says that they're ready for us, so, uh, that project's underway. So between what we're doing over at Dr. Johnson's office and that out there, plus the other load that we've got with the city, uh, we've got our hands full, gentlemen. Any other, that's about all I'm, I hope I, if you think of anything relative to finances that you and I are working on, do we need to make sure the council or whatever?
No, sir. Nothing for book covers.
The only thing is, we don't have one, one, two, we don't have a lot of the supervisor here, we got pretty many. The only thing I tell you, the general fund people don't spend any money that you don't have to spend. Because next, uh, we're, uh, at the end of December, we'll be, um, halfway through the year. And then by June, we got the, we got the flat with our Edlone tax coming in, our Georgia barrel check will be big in January. And then the other, um, the, our garbage transactions should begin to reduce costs and increase revenue. Uh, and I've got another little thing or two, I think, that I can see coming in that will be okay, but I, I'm a bit scared that, uh, June's gonna come here and, uh, the obligations that we're supposed to pay this year is, is gonna be about a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars short, as I see it now at least. And, uh, unless you're gonna perform a miracle. Yeah, the other thing too now, and I think that's next, and we just, once we get to insurance, next, but I'll go ahead and mention to you now, our budget is shot, um, already. And with the new health insurance, we'll get into this just a minute, I'll explain it to you. Uh, our, uh, per employee every month, we pay, uh, seven hundred and, almost seven hundred and fifty dollars in insurance, per employee every month. And next year, it's going to nine hundred, a little over nine hundred dollars per employee every month. So, uh, you take nine hundredths of your old mathematicians. Well, but I'm not talking about that, overall, uh, on an annual basis, uh, an employee is, on top of his salary, we're paying our employees pretty good now. Uh, on top of employee's salary, he's getting ten thousand dollars insurance benefits. Ten thousand dollars. He didn't realize he get his paycheck, but he, he worked it, goes to the doctor, but it costs the city an extra ten thousand dollars. Nine hundred a month, times twelve, it's ten thousand eight hundred dollars. And then on top of that, see, uh, the city employees have a retirement program and, uh, we pay the, the retirement benefits. So when you get through, uh, paying the benefits that we pay, uh, working for the city hazlers is, is not a, not a bad place to work. Let's move on to item five. And I called, um, somebody and let you know, we had a, a falcon came in with the new lockdown price on our new insurance and he had to have a decision, so if y'all don't know, that I called somebody to talk to you about it. So y'all, y'all already proved this, so, uh, uh, even though this is a work session. Uh, next year, let me just tell you, this year, we pay, we see we're self-insured. We pay when you have, when you're deployed city hazlers, this year, we pay the first twenty-five thousand dollars of your health cost. We pay it, we send a check forty thousand dollars a month to the paragon and we're responsible for paying the first twenty-five thousand dollars. When the, the cost of your health benefit exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars, we buy in the health insurance there to cover that. This coming year, we're gonna have to pay the first thirty-five thousand dollars. Every employee, you, uh, the city and what we take out and, and what we pay, we'll pay up to thirty-five thousand dollars. Oh, thirty?
Thirty thousand.
Are you sure of it?
Yes, sir. Right there. Thirty thousand.
Okay. Thank you for correcting.
Uh-huh.
I had written it down here. Okay, so increased to thirty thousand, excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, and, um, per employee, our payment every month, estimating, um, covering this and our insurance premium for anything above that is nine hundred, uh, nine hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents per employee per month. And I obtain a motion that you approve what we've already approved, somebody.
I'll make a motion that we approve the health insurance premium.
For the coming year?
Coming year for the, uh, employees for the city hazlers.
Okay, is there a second to Mr. Griffin's motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bloodworth. Any further discussions or questions that I might can answer?
All the discussion I have and everything about this, I mean, we've got, we need to go and take care of our team and whatever, but I, we need to take and diligently next year, not wait to the end of the year, but we need to take and speak with other vendors and whatever else also early in the year and take and see what we, if, if we can even alleviate any of the costs like this and whatever else, or if we may need to change the way we actually do health insurance, uh, as opposed to being self-insured. And I mean, we don't need to wait until next October to deliver it and start looking at it this year and see what other avenues we have and whatever, and the paragon's being good to us and stuff, but we need to take away our options, we need to take and have them out there on the table so we can all make a better informed decision and not have to take and do what we've got here at the last hour.
I've been seeing that for several years.
Yep.
Been seeing that for several years. I've also been told now, and I'm beginning to see the light a little bit, um, the, um, the deal that we've got for employees is a pretty good deal. It's a pretty good deal. And, um, I, I wanted some changes and thought we could do that, but I think I've been wrong, but Eric's, uh, suggestion is very timely, we need to do everything we can to continue to look at our employees, but to save every dollar we can save. If we sit here and throw money away, uh, when we don't need to, we're, we're, uh, poor leaders. Okay, uh, did we vote on that?
No, we didn't.
Okay, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're committed for another year with paragon and the, uh, insurance benefits. Okay, we're on number six. Mr. Bloodworth, didn't you put this on the, discuss the golf course?
Oh, I can't remember. I actually, uh, had a conversation.
With, uh, Lynn Wood.
About making it possible for the chairman to be able to advise, I guess, some of them what to do when it comes to greens and the fairway. He, he asked me if that was possible. For him to do.
Well, and also, um, in your packet, you've got, uh, some recommendations and Ms. Bennet has been talking with Lynn Wood, or has spoken to them some time ago, that, uh, we made the modification uh, from nine, uh, board members, advisory board members down to seven, and that needs to be corrected. And I, and you've got those, those here. And, uh, he's marked up some stuff, um, in the bylaws, uh, and in fact, I was at the meeting. And, um, uh, what, I think what we need to do is not any, uh, getting a real big rush, but Ms. Bennet and, and the board, uh, out there to, to get together and look at their recommendations. And then before, we're gonna have to approve them, they're not, they're the advisory board. And, uh, when they come up with these suggestions, of course, they're, uh, all of them are golfers, they've got family getting involved and playing golf and giving of their time out there, and I certainly appreciate all of them are, are, are good people. But we want to modify the, uh, the, uh, bylaws of the, uh, golf course. And Ms. Bennet will be the chief engineer of that. When, when do you think you can meet with them?
I can meet with them next, um, meeting if I can get notice ahead of time. I didn't get notice of the meeting till the day of the meeting, so if I can get, you know, advance notice, I can put it on the schedule to be there and I can meet with the whole board.
But you all have any problem with, with getting with the advisory board and modifying and bringing up the date of our bylaws at the golf course?
I don't have an issue with it, no. It may be in our best interest if we do take and give them some latitude, more than what we've given them and everything. I mean, still, they'll be, they'll still answer us and have to have, we have to approve any recommendations regardless, but give them a little latitude, I, I don't think we're...
Well, just like I mentioned at the meeting out there, Bryce was out there, Tony was. Uh, these fellows have taken David left out there and left these two men to, to, to cover the, uh, time span that that golf course has got to be open. And, uh, not only to, to maintain it and look after it, to keep it watered, but to look after the protein, uh, take care of the players and keep the records up there and, and we put a lot on them. And first of all, I want to commend them that they have done a good job. I mean, to take that and where that golf course was and what they've done. Now, I've spent a lot of time out there, uh, a few times, and protecting city equipment out there. And I had made up my mind that, uh, some of, uh, some among us are not too pleased with that golf course. But I had made up my, I played, I played, I played golf on that course, uh, used to play there two or three times a week back years ago and had a golf cart out there, but I don't play much anymore. But, uh, that golf, that little nine-hole golf course, uh, is about as unique and pretty with the landscape and the difference and the, and the, the fairways and whatnot. That is a beautiful little nine-hole golf course, it really is. And for it to get, um, and I've worked on getting the ponds a little bit better, doing some other things around. And, uh, I went out there the other day and got a cart and somebody told me that they played golf out there and they liked what they saw. I went out there and got a cart and slipped out and, and rode it and looked at it. And I am not pleased with the condition of the course. It's, um, and the fact, I'll, um, I didn't share this with, uh, y'all told me when I was out there, but some golfers told me that if, uh, we didn't do something to, to get it back, look a little better and take a little bit better care of it, uh, they will, will have a golf course, because people love to play golf on it.
Is there? Does anybody know or have we heard or have we tried? And I think this is something we looked at years ago, they weren't granting out there four courses at one time. And then I think due to a lot of courses closing and whatever else, there was a lot that were taken off the market for and everything else. I mean, does anybody else have...
I will say this, and I was a little, um, I was a little rowdy, uh, with Tony out there, with Bryce out there. But I'll have to admit that I think, um, I think we're a little negligent, uh, with, uh, getting some things done.
Well, um, as I told you, um, when we first took over, that I said, I told you, springtime and summertime, we was gonna have to have two full-time employees to work that course. Unfortunately, that didn't come to be. And I was having to come in later and stay till, you know, eight, eight-thirty at night during the summertime. Well, I got the kids coming in and out, wanted to use the bathroom, so I'm not able to really do anything but stay in the pro shop. As, as were David when he was there. So me and Bryce always worked outside, it takes two full-time employees to keep that course up.
That's right, and, um, and it's still gonna take two full-time employees that are looking at. Well, here again, I, I, I preface this now by telling you fellows that I, I commend you on some of the things you've done, but now let me tell you something. I thought, this is what I thought, and I've been a little disappointed and I've shared that with, uh, you already and, and Bryce had here. I thought that you two cared enough about that golf course. I thought that you two almost claimed that golf course was yours. For a while, I got the attitude, and talking to y'all, that they all, that, listen, this, this, this thing's gonna, this, now we're gonna take it, and you should, it's making you a good living.
Absolutely.
You got good benefits and you, you'd be making good money right here at home, looking after a golf course. Now, if, if Lynn Wood or, um, the little, um, uh, new guy that's out there, or one of the, uh, members tells you something he's doing, I would've thought, you said, "Good gracious, I didn't see that," and go immediately, instead of questioning somebody telling you what to do, you would've said, "Oh, my goodness." And by the way, one of the members is sitting out there, I forgot, excuse me, Rhonda. I thought that y'all would've had the attitude, the way y'all love that golf course. If somebody told you that, there's a hole that worked, but I had to dodge it with one cart and I almost turned over my cart. You don't have to take that as something, that, that you're not my boss, you don't tell me what to do.
Oh, no, no, no.
You ought to go just as fast as you can and fix it.
Sure.
And the whole Blooming thing is just getting to be a mess and the rust of that, the limbs, the, uh, scattered all out there. I was just reading, I was, I hadn't played golf out there in a while and when I only looked at it, I was embarrassed.
Well, see, that's what, that's what, that's what I was trying, trying to get, um, I guess I maybe didn't make it, understand completely. But what is happening is, is when I come in eleven, now, now, it's gonna change because times change, of course. So we're able to get to the woods as we do every year around about this time to do the work we couldn't get to during the summertime.
I understand all that. Um, here's what, if I were in your place, this is what I would do. Now, I may do it wrong, I, I don't always, uh, no more golfers than you got out there Tuesday through Friday. You're, when you go out there, you ought to unlock the thing and put you about three or four carts out there with the keys in it, ready to go. And you ought to get on your equipment and go to work and you, you can see if anybody comes in and catches. You ain't got staff right now at Blooming, you ain't got no business in that pro shop, a little dabble of people is coming in there. You can be out there on that course working and doing things, picking up.
Sure, I just don't wanna be responsible if somebody comes there and don't pay him, leave him.
Well, lock the door, lock the door.
No, I'm saying if they get the cart and go and play a couple holes, I don't wanna be responsible that they didn't pay 'cause I didn't see them 'cause I was on number three or something.
Well, I, you're not gonna have it, people gonna, you gonna, I could, if they, if they get one of those carts, I'd know about it if I was on that cart. But anyway, let, let's don't get into that. Uh, you, you, here's my conclusion of the work session and what we want to do, and we've got one more item of business here. I think that, uh, you, I'm not getting, uh, a full day's work out of both of you. And, uh, I think that you need to, uh, uh, go to work if you want to keep that golf course, you want to keep it open. You got some folks here just done turned goats on it. And if you want to keep that golf course, you better get off your butt and get busy and keep it in good shape and get golfers out there. If you don't, you're gonna be looking for a job.
Are we done?
No, sir. Um, you, by the way, y'all got anything to say if you think I'm being too rough?
I'm fine with it, 'cause if you ever go by the golf course?
Yeah.
I'm always out there. I'm always working. I'm never in that pro shop. This Saturday, I was cutting grass while Lynn with them were playing. I'm always working. I don't sit in that pro shop.
Right.
You need to go by more often and come out there, I'll leave you a cart or I'll give you a key. I'm always out there. I've always asked you to come out there and help.
Well, I've tried. Oh, we, we had a resignation of one of their board members and they, the board has met and recommended we, uh, appoint, uh, Matt Bloodworth, entertain a motion that we appoint Matt to the, uh, uh, golf advisory board?
Make a motion.
Mr. Griffin made a motion that we appoint Matt, Matt Bloodworth, is there a second? Second by Mr. Johnson? Any further discussion? If you're none, a call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or you can notify, um, Rhonda, notify you board that we've, uh, appointed... All right, you can notify, um, London, notify your board that we've, uh, appointed Mr. Bloodworth to take the place of Ms. Bennet.
Second.
Outstanding for voting on that.
Oh, you did. Um, oh, gentlemen, if we've been, if I've made a mistake or, or been ugly, uh, out of line, I, I, I hope that you'll accept my apology. But I've got, I put a lot, that golf course was built, I was out there picking up roots in it back in the sixties. And, uh, so I got a lot of my life in that golf course. And, uh, for me to see it and see it come back from where it was and then go out there and see what I saw, I think you understand what I'm talking about.
Sure. I just think we took a back step after David left. Got used to only having two out there and thought we could pull it, and we can't.
All right, um, you've heard what I had to say among, count on you folks. I think, I think y'all did careful with the golf course. You better get off, um, get off your bottom and get out there and go to work now. Uh, you said you wanna be excused, that's all of that.
Not your chest size, any of their employees, that's for sure, but they wouldn't like my suggestion either.
Mr. Remy, you, your problem is right. Uh, we've got that appointment made. All right, let's move along. Um, Madam Clerk, the date of the Christmas parade is December the tenth?
December the eighth at six-thirty. Yes, sir. And they have submitted a letter with the route included.
They want us to approve the date of December the eighth, and it's gonna be a little something different this year. The parking lot between the old Western Auto and the old Buick place, now, y'all may not know it as that, uh, where the Wilson hardware, they wanna set up a, a, a big trailer there and have a platform of video and then having some kind of activities in that little thing. So I entertain a motion that we allow the, uh, is it the, uh, table commerce? We allow the table commerce to, uh, uh, handle their plans on December the eighth of the Christmas parade.
No, no.
Mr. Bloodworth made a motion and seconded by Mr. Remy. Uh, is there any further discussion? You have none to call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have none, a motion to carry. All right, all this other stuff, we'll handle Thursday night. Um, we've done, we've been just in a work session already, but I felt that some of it just had to be done. Okay, gentlemen, you got anything that can see what's, what's next? Citizen first, anybody, anybody got anything they wanna say?
Um, there's a few things, Mayor, while we're on the citizen comments, I want to bring up. November twenty-sixth, there's a community trip to the RPM in Augusta. They've got a charter bus. I need to know who will be attending so that I can let Andrea know. Um, it will be, they'll leave the Harries parking lot at seven forty-five and be back at six P M. that evening. Dress as business casual, so if anyone's going to be going, please let me know. Second, Georgia Rural Water Association is having a G R W A finance workshop Wednesday, December fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Lunch will be provided, there is no cost.
Who's in?
Making, Georgia, at the Holiday Inn, River Place Drive. There is a lot of information that's going to be presented at this meeting that, um, that we could get a lot out of. I need to know who, um, will be attending so that I can get registration set up. Again, it doesn't cost anything and lunch is provided.
Put me down, I'm going.
Yes, sir. Okay.
I hope you hear my tip.
Sorry.
I hope you hear my tip.
All right, I will get these submitted.
Um, Chief, uh, by the way, Ms. Lopez had mentioned to me there's some little, uh, disco things that pass you over to the work session at the bottom of your page. And, uh, I don't know if I, okay, I'm sorry.
Um, Chief Williams submitted to me today, you see an invoice in front of you for, um, some training for Macy Dean with the K nine unit. Um, she will be attending, um, desert snow training in Atlanta, Georgia on, give me just a moment, December the twelfth at a cost of a hundred and fifty dollars. This will come out of the K nine fund. She will also have to stay at a hotel the night before. That will come out of the K nine fund, but, um, y'all, I need to get approval on this, so, um...
Entertainer motion that we approve the, the, uh, travel and the dog training, uh, canine training for our police officer. Uh, the funds will come out of the, um, um, what's that fund called?
K nine.
Okay, K nine fund. Uh, entertain a motion?
No, no.
Mr. Remy made a motion, we approve the, uh, training?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bloodworth. All in favor, any further discussion? You have none to call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, she'll be on her way. All right, what else?
Yes, sir.
Look at the bottom of your page down there. Um, I didn't.
It's a germ.
I didn't.
Huh? You said, "Look at the bottom of the page."
He said a germ.
That's, that's the bottom. I don't know, it's part of it. Okay, um, I didn't particularly like what I read. Need to discuss safety bonuses and Christmas bonuses for employees already being asked by the employees. If they shut their blooming mouth, they get more from me, then to me, they won't. I didn't like what they're, what they're attitude, so you tell them, "I gotta know them from me, I'm gonna go against them." Uh, but at any rate, that's their need to discuss potential raises for employees that haven't received one. In the state, the, the raises we looked at, but, and, and pay something else we stated too. And I can whip myself a little bit. I thought, sure, that, that, uh, chart of employee descrip, the jobs descriptions and ranking of the employees would've been finished by, and I told, I think I told you, be finished by the end of the year. It is not going to be. I have not had time. I haven't looked at it in two months. So, uh, the thing that I thought I was gonna have in your hands to help you make the decisions about employee raises, I just have not had time to complete it. I just have not, I've got it started, I've got it well underway. Carl has, um, got some of the job descriptions, they didn't do it out of the fit well, but it's just gonna take, uh, several hours of sitting down and, and looking at, you know, about fifty-something employees. And, um, it takes, um, to get all the descriptions down and grade them and, and rank them and then look, it, it, it just takes time that I haven't had. Oh, into your, oh, you, by the way, what are we going to do about Thanksgiving and Christmas, y'all?
Thanksgiving's on top of us right now, so we better, if we're gonna do anything for Thanksgiving, we better find out Thursday night and plan it for next week. I thought early in the week. 'Cause, I mean, we're out here and then trying to get somebody to do it for us and everything. You know, we're, we, we pretty much waited around to the last minute. So Thanksgiving, not just be out of question, maybe next week, just do Christmas, meet us with.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be my suggestion, because, I mean, we're here, it's Tuesday, Thanksgiving's next Thursday. And, I mean, anybody that's gonna be catering anything's already got, this, that and the other, whatever else, I mean.
We've got two, well, and then we got one.
We waited this late in the game, hadn't got anything in the hopper, let's fix it for Christmas, that's me.
Save a little money.
I mean, it's bad to say, but the thing that it is.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chief, can I make a recommendation from the employees? Yeah. Don't worry about Thanksgiving, I mean, we're, we're financially, we need to, let's, let's try to do Christmas. Like with, uh, Thanksgiving, we, you know, I know families are tight right now, the city's tight, so let's, let's focus on Christmas and not worry about Thanksgiving. I like, I like your suggestion, Castle, but I think our chief, uh, fire chief's making a good suggestion. I hate that, but, uh, that'll save some money and it, uh, unload it with, I got, I, I don't know about y'all, but I got, I can handle. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna let, uh, Thanksgiving slide, uh, so we're gonna plan, um, I'll tell you what, uh, Ms. Lopez is, how about checking the calendar and, uh, come up with a Christmas, uh, vacation time, when we're gonna get off, what day and, and all that sort of stuff and have it ready for us Thursday night. And, um, and we'll go ahead Thursday night and set up and make our plans of the date and what we're gonna do about Christmas, and then we'll work that in some way. Saying all of you thinking between then and then, Thursday night, we will do that.
Um, Christmas actually falls on a Tuesday this year. We've got Christmas Eve on a Monday. So...
That's, if we're gonna do the dinner, I'd say we do the dinner on the twenty-first.
Is that a Friday?
On Friday. And then for the, I mean, the day off, if you get Christmas Eve off or whatever.
Then they leave Friday, they got Saturday, Sunday, Monday and Tuesday and come back, Wednesday. That's, that's pretty good to help and work that, one day there, I think that would be helpful. Um, so if we, tentatively, we'll, we'll resolve this Thursday night. But then it looks like from Mr. Griffin's suggestion, and he's got his calendar, that we'll, we'll probably do that. And then we'll, I don't know whether we've been sending out that, then sort of suggest the menu. Um, I don't know, what, what if y'all think? Let's try to get it all settled up Thursday night. Now, while we're here in this work session, and, uh, we're, we're not overdoing, it's time to, of course, we go home. What do y'all wanna do about this with our financial circumstances? What are we gonna do about, uh, Christmas bonuses and, uh, some of the, uh, what incentives that we, uh, sort of indicated that we might be able to give? What are we gonna do about that? Just tell them this, uh, time, not where we look?
No, I think that those Christmas bonuses, safety bonuses, and, uh, this should be there to help them. Most of the employee got, got raises, didn't they?
Hmm.
Just about all.
No, half and half, if not less than that.
Yeah.
It's better for you. We just don't.
But, but the Christmas bonus and, and, I mean, those safety bonuses.
That's a big, that's a big hunk, Johnson. That's a big hunk, the way we've been doing it. That's a bunch of money. I forget right now what, does anybody remember?
I figured it out the other day and with everyone that's, this is going by last year, okay? Last year, there was around twenty-two thousand dollars paid out, okay?
It's gonna cost you twenty-five thousand dollars.
But, man, we got rid of, not got rid of, but people retired that were getting these large checks, okay? And we've lost some people. So with the figures that I had last, from last year and deducting those dollars amounts, you may be talking about twenty thousand dollars.
Talk about between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars that we ain't got.
Mayor, uh, I suggest that we put in, uh, some time to study, uh, this to find the most feasible way that it can be done to help the employees and the city. But, uh, for this year, uh, we're almost locked into a situation that, uh, it's been promised almost, uh, they look forward to this as, uh, their bonus. And, uh, for this year, I think that they need their bonuses as much as we are hurting, uh, in the city. Uh, they, this may be their sign of loss.
You're, Mr. Remy, you're right there. Um, unfortunately, I've already heard the stories. Um, the employees say, "I can't have Christmas if it's not given to me." And you're talking about people with children.
It may be rerouted for the future, but, and I think it does, uh, really, but, uh, to do it at the last minute like this, I think would, uh...
Yeah, we would be remiss to do that, that's not...
So you think we're gonna have to swallow the pill, huh?
Yeah.
So what you say?
The bonuses, yeah, and then on the raises, we just don't have to take them.
Right.
That, that's not, we're not, that's probably not gonna happen.
Yes, sir, Mr. Remy.
Y'all voted earlier to go ahead and pay all these contractors when you got the money. These contractors have voluntarily said that they would wait, they know that the, uh, condition of the city. So I think y'all should reconsider that second motion that y'all made and think about the employees, because these contracts, we paid them tons of money. And they volunteered to put it off to next year or later on. I think that's the way you could find some money.
Well, it's been, um, they've all, all been good, well, I'm gonna tell you something. They made a bunch of money, obviously. There's forty thousand dollars left, there's sixty thousand dollars left, but by towards, if you wanna look at what they did, hundreds of thousands of dollars paid to these people, and they, and they know that too. And, um, but at any rate, uh, we, we made those judgments, um, with, with what we owe, um, we still will have, we'll have the money to pay them. I don't know what the hell we gonna do in June, but we'll, we'll, we'll face June when we get here. We've got the money, and even with that check that's coming in, it's not gonna take all of it to, to pay off, yes, it will. So we'll, we'll do that in, in June when they tell us we're going. Close up City Hall, let the council run the thing.
Twenty thousand is dropping the budget compared to what we're talking about for them, ones, for them contracts.
All right, we're planning that, and I think we've got a little preliminary good debt on that list out of down there. We are gonna, uh, have a Christmas dinner, we'll plan it, uh, Thursday, and we'll figure the bonuses up. Ms. Lopez, you can begin to start, that's a little task that you have to get to to get it all figured out. You gonna work on that?
Yes, sir.
Um, so, yeah, gentlemen, I see that, citizen comments? Gentlemen, y'all got anything else to say? Yes, sir.
I do. Uh, I just wanna, uh, tell my council members that I will not be here, uh, this Thursday, my wife will be having surgery. I apologize for that, uh, contact me by phone, I'll do anything I can.
Hope all do well, and I second Mr. Johnson.
Motion made, seconded, adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I mean, Lord of the mess, we have two meetings on the same night.
Y'all gonna quit that mess?